Stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for inviting me today for today's invocation. Mayor Ames, I want to ask you, before we pray, is there anything in particular you want us to pray about?
Oh, okay. We can pray that we don't have any more storms this year.
Okay.
We can pray that we all come together and work together as one.
Okay.
I could give you a big list. We just really need to recover from the pandemic, obviously. And we've had so many natural disasters over the past several years. It's been very trying on the city and our citizens.
Okay, okay. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the blessings we have already received. We thank you for the opportunity also to bless others. Father, this afternoon, we want to first lift up Mayor Ames and the city council members. Mr. Fieldshall, Mr. Getz, Mr. Neal, Mr. Pate, Mr. Samuel, Ms. Mouton. We pray first that you will bless each of them and their respective families. We pray that you will grant them health, peace, safety, and we pray for healing. Not just for healing for them, but each individual that's affected by the pandemic in one way or another, Lord. Father, we pray also for each council member that you will bless them with wisdom, discernment, clarity. We thank you for the sacrifices that each of them have made on our behalf. We pray that you will continue to use them to lead the city of Beaumont in the present and in the future ahead. We pray for all the essential and frontline workers of this city, from the police to the firefighters, to the custodial workers, and to all the medical personnel and beyond. We pray that you will continue to keep them safe and in good health. We thank you for their sacrifices, especially in the time of this pandemic. Father, we also pray for unity as the nation seems to be divided. Father, we pray for one purpose, united together. We pray that for the rest of the year that you will help us to stay safe in the storm. And if it is that well, we ask that you will keep the storms away. Lastly, we ask that you will bless the agenda item for today. We pray that all the voices here today will be heard, and we ask that your will be done. Father in heaven, we thank you for hearing and answering our prayers. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please? Mayor Ames here. Mayor Protem Felschall.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Mouton.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you. We do not have any presentations or proclamations today, so now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on scheduled agenda items one through six or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to speak on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer. We will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you would like to speak on item number seven, we will have a separate public hearing for that purpose. Or if you would like to speak on item number eight, we will also have a public hearing for that purpose. So I will open up the microphone for those two items separately. And then at the end of the meeting, I will open up the microphone for any citizen who wishes to speak on any item. But once more, on all of them, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. But right now, it's for one through six or the consent agenda. I don't have any, Mayor. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on one through six or the consent agenda? Appears to be no one. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion, please, on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any questions or discussion? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't D. Talking about the money that we're going to be receiving from the Texas Department of Health Services. The $68,000 for basically six months of contract staff. Is there going to be more funds becoming available for that, or is that?
We have care funds now.
We'll take care of the difference. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we're doing the best we can with, they provide this money different periods of time, as y'all know. Sometimes six months, a year, and it's helpful. We'd make a determination if we didn't get it whether we kept that staff or not, because they hire people part-time or on a short-term basis.
Yeah, contract. Anything else, counsel? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Item number one is an ordinance of the city of Beaumont, Texas, providing for certain proposed amendments to the existing charter of the city to be submitted to the qualified voters of the city at the May 1, 2021 election, stating the subject matter of the proposed amendments to the city charter to be voted upon at said election. And the city attorney, Tyrone Cooper, will come forward and lead the item.
Good afternoon. We have had several public discussions on the changes, on the proposed changes to the charter that the council is interested in submitting to the voters at the May election. The ordinance that you have in front of you is in the form of, the first part of the ordinance will show the amendments as they would appear, should they prevail on May 1st. And in the rear, you will see the propositions as they will appear on the ballot. And that's what we discussed on last week, proposals that will appear on the ballot. Are there any questions?
So there's nothing different here than what we discussed last week?
No, nothing different.
Okay. Counsel, did I entertain a motion yet?
It's approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Attorney, last time, I guess in 2003, the, there were certain members of council and maybe city staff that helped push this for a vote. Can we discuss that for a second?
I was going to do that. Yes, let me remind you, back in 2003, the last time we had charter change amendments presented to the citizens, that was a, an assembly of the mayor, council members, city manager. I'm not sure if the city clerk participated. But there was basically a roundtable discussion, attempting to educate the public as to what the propositions meant. And there was a complaint filed with the Texas Ethics Commission, indicating that by the assembly of that group that was televised and broadcast throughout normal broadcasting with Lamar, that that was considered to be political advertising. And the election code says that once a proposition hits the ballot, there cannot be any use of city personnel, city resources to advocate for or against any proposition that's on the ballot. So I would advise you that after you vote on this today, that there be no advocating, one way or another, as to what your opinion might be of a proposition on the ballot. You leave it to the voters to determine.
So how do you help sell this to the citizens?
You can't.
You don't. Not as a city official, not using city resources.
Thank you.
Yes.
I understand the point about not using city resources. But if a citizen approaches you on the street and says, what is this proposition about? I don't understand it. Is there anything illegal or wrong with a council member, to the best of their ability, explaining what that proposition stands for without using city resources?
Well, as I just indicated, my advice to you would be not to advise or advocate up or down any proposition on the ballot. Now, you may consider yourself a city resource. You may not consider yourself a city resource. If it were me, I don't think I'd want to go through it. But, you know, you.
Okay, just a second.
Up to your own devices.
Is that all, councilmember?
Any other questions?
Councilmember Pate.
Could we refer them? I don't know how this vote's going to go, to the fact that we can't really talk about it. But if all this passes, we can say the majority of council voted for this, and you can check the record.
You mean if it passes today?
Assuming that it does.
Well, it goes without saying that you are suggesting that it go on the ballot for voter consideration, without saying you're in favor or against the passage of the particular, of all of the propositions.
I know it's kind of a fine line, but I remember when city council went through all that stuff, and I thought, that's, you know, walking on a razor's edge. Because to me, it didn't come across at the time for anything other than, we just want to let you know that it's on the ballot.
For education.
And, yeah, strictly to inform the citizens as opposed to trying to convince them one way or the other. So I was just trying to, as was Mike, just to get clarification on how we walk the land without, you know, somebody just going over the top.
My best advice to you is that once it hits the ballot.
Say nothing.
Say nothing. I mean, you could ask the city manager. He was involved in.
I know. That's what just floored me. I was still scratching my head going, who, who's making an issue out of this?
Right, and I think what you're trying to say is that once you pass this, that you're advocating that something happened.
Yeah.
And it goes without saying, but after today, once it hits the ballot, it's up to the citizens.
Yeah.
Councilman Getz.
My understanding of that ethics opinion is that it turned on the fact that city resources were used to help explain either up or down what this ordinance was, that being the televised camera system that we pay for with taxpayer dollars. I don't know that that extends to the point where you give up your First Amendment rights to talk to your constituents. I appreciate your advice. I'll act within my own conscience. Thank you.
Councilman Samuel.
Well, I want to be one of the ones that make it real clear. We all know what advocate, what it means to advocate. We can explain, and we can explain it from a neutral point. We don't have to make this all drawn out so anyone gets confused. We can explain what the ballot, what's on the ballot. It's the individual. You have to make an individual choice whether you're going to walk the thin line or not. It's pretty simple.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of item number one. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Gulf Coast of Beaumont for street rehabilitation work. The street rehabilitation citywide Phase III project consists of the rehabilitation of seven roadways. The administration recommends this project be awarded to the lowest bidder, Gulf Coast, in the amount of $1,458,594.47. A total of 180 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the street rehabilitation program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved to approve, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Getz.
Okay, so I'm looking at these streets that are being considered for improvement, and I think they all need to be addressed. I note that only one of them is in Ward Two. And there's a street that I have been advocating to try to get resurfaced now in the Amelia Edition for over two years. And I've talked to Bart about this through emails. But this particular street, Shepherd, has been a source of concern for some of the citizens that live on that street for a long time now. I understand that that was originally put on this list, but then taken out because of proposed DD-6 drainage improvements. And while I think I understand what happened there, for the viewing audience and the people that are here, I'd like to get some clarification of when we can look to have that street redone.
Did you answer that the other day in the email?
I did.
He did, he did for me. I'm asking him to explain for the viewing audience and for the people that are here, Mr. Manager.
It was in Shepherd along with, I think it was Bruin and Calhoun. There were three roads in the Amelia. They were all on Phase One street rehab. And when DD-6 showed us the, I believe they call it the McLean Drainage Project, they're going to tear up the, I think it's Calhoun, tear up the entirety of Calhoun. And then they're going to go several hundred yards into a bunch of cross streets in that area. So not only did we not want to rehab a street that was going to get torn open, but we also didn't want to rehab adjacent streets, knowing that there'd be a lot of heavy truck traffic in for this drainage project. So we've, we've got those ready. We're probably going to put them in on Phase Four, which will come to y'all down the road. And we're in communication with DD-6 so that when they finish their drainage project, then we'll come back and we'll rehab the roads that we were planning to rehab in the first place. We just had to shift them in time to make sure that the work didn't go and get flipped.
Right, and I completely support that. I just wanted that stated as a matter of record so that later on down the road, if it comes back and it looks like, well, now, wait a minute, we have a bunch of streets in Ward Two that are being addressed, there's reasons behind that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other?
Have a comment?
Go ahead, please.
I would like to say that the streets that are on the rehab are, five of them are in Ward Four. And a lot of the streets have had major reports. And that I'm happy to see that they're on the list and they're moving forward for rehab. Thanks so much.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number three, please.
Mayor and council, item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Solid Bridge Construction out of Huntsville for work at the Cattail Marsh constructed wetland. The contract will provide for the repair of the exterior and interior slope of the existing levees at locations damaged by the flooding from Tropical Storm Harvey. The administration recommends awarding the project, again, to the lowest bidder, Solid Waste, Solid Bridge Construction, in the amount of $953,145.45. A total of 120 calendar days are allocated for the completion of the project. Funds are available from FEMA in the amount of $858,073.91. The remainder is in the Harvey Fund. Again, we recommend approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, Solid Bridge Construction out of Huntsville. I have, I guess, a new guy for us to deal with. Have we checked references on this?
We have. Sean Bergen Polk has looked at their background and work and recommends them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, counsel? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number four, please.
Item number four is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to McGinnis Construction Incorporated of Sillsby for the fleet management facility parking lot reconstruction project. Calling it Phase One. Phase One consists of reconstructing the front portion of the parking lot. Additional improvements include replacing the underground fuel storage tank with a new above-ground tank and for ditch modifications to help with drainage at the location. The administration recommends this project be awarded to the lowest bidder, McGinnis Construction Incorporated, in the amount of $888,820.27. A total of 180 calendar days are allocated for the project. Funds are available in the capital program. We recommend approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Moved to approve.
There's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, Phase One, all right, let me back up. How much was budgeted in the capital plan for this?
I think two and a half million.
And how many phases are there?
Well, I don't know if you were on the council the time we took the council on a.
I was there.
Okay, so we went out to this location, and we estimate that we can do the work for about two and a half million. And the council approved a transfer of funds from the fund balance to, at that time, is to the Capital Reserve, eventually to the capital program. And we thought we'd do a million dollars of work in this first phase, because that's, that's all the council transferred, it's a million dollars. So either we can, in the future, maybe find additional unencumbered monies, or the next time that you consider borrowing funds, certificates of obligation, you could do, you could borrow funds at that time. So we were planning to do up to a million dollars, and this bid came in, as you can see, a little less than 900,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Getz.
Is there a problem with the current underground tank?
He can relax in that?
No, but I know we are, I mean, I think we are, yes, trying to do a way that any of our underground tanks have been in there a period of time. It becomes an environmental issue.
There were three tanks at that location. One of them has been abandoned in place years ago and filled in. The second one was already leaking. The third one's going to be imminent if not leaking soon. They've reached the end of their life, so we're going to actually take out all three of them in this project, do the remediation as we do the parking lot. And then by putting it above ground, you'll be able to manage that tank, do any maintenance on it. And if it's ever leaking in the future, you're going to know it because it's above ground, so it's a better situation.
Just as a matter of education and history, if we're going to be putting tanks above ground now, what was the thought process of putting them underground in the past?
I don't know. It's always the way it had been done. I mean, it does give us benefit to have it above ground too, though, because we can actually pull fuel off the tank and then a power failure, which you can't, obviously, on a below-ground tank. But I don't know what the logic was. I know growing up, they were all below ground. You didn't have to deal with the EPA. Yeah, probably back then, you didn't have any of those rules. But, I mean, our, having them underground and out of sight and with our soil, I mean, eventually, it's going to leak.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Neal making a motion, and I believe that Councilmember Pate seconded it. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number, next item, number two.
Mayor and council, item number five is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Viking Painting LLC out of Omaha, Nebraska, for the West Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. This is a 1 million gallon tank. It's located just east of Interstate 10 on, at Laurel. It will be recoded, both the exterior and the interior. The administration recommends awarding the project to Viking Painting in the amount of $849,900. A total of 150 working days are allocated for the project. Funds are budgeted in the capital program. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion on this item, please?
Moved to approve.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Getz.
Mr. Manager, does the painting contract include anything on the exterior for the logo of the city of Beaumont? Or is it just going to be painted one color? It does? All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Manager. It will have the same logo that's uniform across the city?
Yeah, the new, the new logo, the most recent one, it'll just say Beaumont, and then it's a blue, same blue color.
With the star?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number six, please.
Mayor and council, item number six is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of a new fire truck. A 2021 pumper truck would be purchased from Sidens Martin Emergency Group out of Denton, Texas, in the amount of $675,919. The new truck will replace a 1993 fire truck that has a little over 81,000 miles. Delivery is expected within 12 to 13 months. Funds would be budgeted in the fiscal year 2022 budget. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You have heard the reading of item number six. Or is there a motion on this item, please?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve.
He likes to approve those fire trucks. We've been doing a lot of those lately. Okay, who was the motion, please?
Some moved to approve.
And I second.
Okay. Is that good? All right. Councilmember Mouton and Getz. All right, is there any discussion? Would you say that our fleet of fire vehicles is in great shape?
I know it's in good shape. I think the fire department, the two chiefs are here, the fire chief and the assistant chief, I'd say they're very pleased. And we try to buy a new pumper on a yearly basis, and they're very expensive, as you know, and y'all support it for years and years to keep that fleet in good condition, so we thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
The current fleet is in really good shape, and if we can continue buying a pumper every year, our fleet might maintain really, really good shape.
Well, they look good to going down the, going down the road. All right, thank you so much. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries also unanimously. And we have a public hearing next, so if you want to read the caption on that, I'll open the floor in a moment.
Mayor and council, before the public hearing, you're going to consider, after the public hearing, a resolution amending the Consolidated Grant Program's 2019 action plan. And previously, you, the council, approved an amendment to the 2019 plan to include a little over $800,000 in CARES Act funding. And more recently, the Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated an additional $689,340 in supplemental CARES Act funding to the city of Beaumont. In order to utilize these funds, the administration is proposing to again amend the action plan to incorporate the new funding. The funds would be added to the existing rental assistance program that was established with the first round of funding. The rental assistance program provides up to three months of rent and utility assistance for low to moderate income families at risk of becoming homeless. The program is administered through local nonprofit partners, Henry's Place slash some other place. other place, and Habitat for Humanity. So, may it be appropriate to have the public hearing at this time, and then we'll ask you to consider the, the resolution next.
Okay, I'll, I'll open the floor for a public hearing regarding item number seven as read. If there is anyone who would like to speak on this item, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer who will hand it to the city clerk. She will call out your name. Do you have any? Okay, is there anyone wishes to speak on this item? All right, if there's no one, council, do you need to read anything else on this?
No, ma'am, the administration recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Council, is there a motion on item number seven?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? Council.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, how were some other place and Habitat for Humanity selected for this?
They're the only partners that I'm aware of that work with homeless on a routine or daily basis.
I think southeast Texas regional planning was involved too, weren't they?
They're involved, just in the administration.
That's correct. Of course, some other place, Henry's Place, they deal with homeless on a regular basis. And then we partner with Habitat on our regular rehab program, so we have a good working relationship with them, so we, we knew that they had the capability and capacity to carry out the program.
So how are these funds going to be divided amongst the two?
The initial allotment was three hundred thousand per each entity. These will be allocated depending upon capacity, which we're still working out currently. Currently, some other place, some other place, Henry's Place, is actually moving at a little bit quicker pace, and so we may end up allocating more funds to them as opposed to Habitat. But again, the priority is getting the funds out quickly.
All right, last question. What are the requirements for this utility and rental assistance?
So you have to be a resident of Beaumont. You have to meet income eligibility based on family size. You have to have been affected by the pandemic, so we look for layoffs or some kind of proof of that. And again, the funds either go to pay directly to the utility or to the landlord for the rental assistance or utility assistance.
It doesn't go to the individual?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And there, Mr. Boone, there isn't, from the first time that we funded this, is there still money left in there?
Correct. At this point, we have approximately one hundred thousand left, so there is, there is some money left, but again, we're anxious to get this funded, because I think we're quickly going to be, be needing it.
I just wanted to make the point for anyone that might be listening, because that is a conversation that I've had with many of the pastors here in town.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Also, I'm sorry, one other question.
Go ahead, please.
Do you know approximately when this money will be available in, for dispersment?
So it will be up to HUD Houston to release it, but we do expect within the next thirty days. So the, the hope again is that there's no gap in between when it's allocated, but we expect within the next thirty days.
Next thirty days?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
But the, the money that's in there right now, that's still there from the last allocation, will remain, and we're hoping that it, it meets.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to avoid that gap.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, another public hearing on dangerous structures.
Yes, ma'am. Before the public hearing, there's an ordinance entitled, an ordinance finding certain structures to be public nuisances and ordering their demolition and removal or repair, providing for severability and providing for penalty. The city council, after conducting the public hearing, would like for you to consider the ordinance to declare, it's actually changed, if you look at the memorandum, it's changed now to twenty-three structures. Numbers nine and sixteen have been removed because they did not go before the landmark commission. So you'll consider an ordinance to, to declare twenty-three structures to be unsafe structures and order the owners to raise the said structures within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner of a structure requests and is authorized by you to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full, or a payment plan shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within ten days after the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay.
Send mine as nine and sixteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing for any citizen who wishes to speak today regarding dangerous structures. Please keep in mind what the city manager quoted just now, that if you do ask for an extension, it has to be pretty well, well short up in ninety days and completed in a hundred and fifty days. That's the extension that's available to you today, and council may have some questions of you. If you are going to speak in this public hearing and you haven't already done so, please make sure and fill out the green slip at the rear of the room. And when you hand it to the officer to hand to the city clerk, please specify which structure you're here to speak on.
A day, Aluto, forty-forty Crow Road, Beaumont, Texas. Item number sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-six, Lenson. I thought sixteen was one of the ones. Oh, I'm sorry, she had sixteen, number eleven, I'm sorry.
Eleven?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, good afternoon. Requesting Representative Carrie Gussard. She's requesting an extension of ninety days on the property. She is looking to sell the property to an investor who is going to do the rehab work, and that's the reason why she is looking to get the extension, so she can progress with that initiated.
What property was this?
It's number eleven.
Eleven.
The new number eleven or the old number eleven?
It's the eleven that's on this, that was sitting on your desk?
Or is it the same one?
This new one? Yeah, okay. It's Lenson and auxiliary building. Are you asking for both structures, sir?
Yes.
And you're representing the owner?
Yes, Carrie Gussard.
Council, any questions? Has it been in a work program before? It has been in a work program before? And a different owner?
There's a, a pre-council administrative work program under the prior owner from September of 2019 to February of 2019.
Okay. But it was a previous.
Did you say a prior owner?
Same, same owner.
Oh, same owner?
When was this house first red-tagged?
This house was red-tagged September nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Are you aware that there's also sixty-two hundred dollars in back taxes?
Yes, she's aware.
And she was in a work program before. Is there a reason that we're asking for another one?
Like I said, I think the, the main reason is the fact that she is selling to an investor, and so I think that's the, I'm not sure why it wasn't rectified in the past, but that's just all that was communicated to me as far as the current.
Councilman Pate.
Do you have any kind of timeframe on the closing of the sale?
Yes, so the, supposed to close in the next two weeks, but the investor is asking, is, is not going to proceed contingent on whether or not they move forward to demolition or not. So there's an inspection order, the contractors coming on Saturday to look at the property and do a scope of work for what needs to be done, and move from there.
Okay. Anything else, council? Thank you, sir. I was, I'll just mention that what we will do is we'll go through everyone that wants to speak, and then the council will make a motion at the end of that regarding whether or not the extension is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Charles K. Richard, fifty-seven, eighty Falcon, Beaumont, Texas, speaking on item number ten, eighty-three, fifty Lawrence.
Yes, sir.
I was told to come here about a piece of property that is not, that causing any problem. It's a storage building, a piece of property that was supposed to be rebuilt from the last time y'all had rebuilding. Y'all said y'all was going to tear it down and rebuild, and y'all ran out of money. So I moved everything into that piece of property. Your, your, your housing people came and said that since I didn't have electricity or water running, they wanted me to get it back on. And I told them I wasn't going to do that until I rebuilt on the other property. The structure is not, is not endangering anyone, so I don't know why I'm on this list.
Okay, sir, what are you asking us for? Are you asking us for an extension, or are you?
I'm asking to come and remove your red tag, because it has caused problems. People have come to my property since it's been red-tagged and started attacking my property.
Okay.
It happened the last time y'all did this. I'm asking, you raised toward down and costing me two hundred and something thousand dollars, and I have not complained. I try to respect y'all's authority and the fact that y'all are the council for the area that I live in. I spent many times, many years in the military taking care of people underneath me.
Yes.
I sacrificed tons of things, my health and my life.
Yes, sir, I understand.
But I'm getting tired of every time y'all make a mistake, y'all don't correct it. Now, y'all tore down house after house after house, haven't y'all? Y'all even said that y'all don't have money to cut the grass. Y'all are trying to find a way to get the properties to somebody else, y'all won't have to cut the grass. But yet you're still tearing down houses. Why?
Did you have something, Councilmember, were you? I thought you were saying mayor. No? Okay. Chris, or Mr. Boone, would someone from staff like to speak to this, please?
Now, I have over maybe two hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that I use to help people when disasters hit like this. And I was tearing, I was tearing sheet rock and stuff out for people, but I had to stop because I have my mother-in-law and my, and my, uh, my parents at home, and I can't risk bringing any of this so-called disease, whatever y'all call it, home with me. So I had to stop.
Okay, so, sir, we have to.
Someone came along and stole over thirty thousand dollars out of my house because of the fact there was a red tag on it.
Yes, sir, we tried to.
Because you're saying something that's not true.
Okay.
Your opinion, you're not, you're not supposed to have an opinion on things when you're guiding and helping. How do you guide and help people by taking away the stuff that they've hurt hard for? You gave yourself raises. Would you like me to take your raises back since it's our money?
Okay, there's, there's been no raises, but let's get to, stick to the fact, sir.
Quite some time.
Okay, sir.
You've been here for quite some time.
Sir, excuse me.
I was telling you, you gave yourself raises.
Excuse me, sir, let me, let me make a comment, please. Okay, we treat everyone the same. We don't make exceptions.
I respect y'all first thing I say.
I understand, so please know that. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you for just a moment, please, to let the staff tell the council what's happening with your structure, okay? All right, thank you. Mr. Boone.
Mayor, the, the property was red-tagged on November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. A work program was enrolled in in December of twenty nineteen. No permits were pulled, no work was done. The, the work program expired May fourth, twenty twenty. The pictures in your packet, I believe, were taken January of this year, and I believe there is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars in back taxes owed.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Boone, council? Yes, sir, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, sir. We will vote at the end of the, at the end of, when everyone else has their chance to speak.
I, I can't speak anymore?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I hope he does speak now, but I can't speak anymore to what he said. He didn't state why he came.
If, we've already given you your three minutes, but if you will make it very quick, I'll let you say just one piece, but.
He didn't state why he came.
Okay.
He came because he said, they said that someone was there. It wasn't because of structures, what you call it. I was coming back and forth on my house, and the people were saying that people were coming there.
Yes, sir.
And so.
Yes, sir, we, we heard you. We did.
They weren't coming there, and he tagged it wrongly.
Yes, sir, I understand. The staff has to look at the house to tag it, but thank you very much for coming. We will vote at the end of this session, okay?
Moreida Gonzalez, sixty-six, twenty-five, Winwood Lane, Beaumont, Texas. Item number seventeen, I think the address is one-one-two-two-five Pine Cove.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, I apologize.
Moreida.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, go ahead, please.
I am requesting a hundred and day, a hundred and eighty days, um, extension for my property. We have faced financial hardships due to the pandemic. We don't owe any taxes on the property. We have done, we have leveled the house, we have done plumbing on the house, we have it on a good slab now. We were just lacking funds. My husband got laid off, so that kind of pushed us back on, you could say, our budget. And we used that money kind of to get us by the whole quarantine and stuff, but I could say he's back out of work, I am soon getting a job. My contractor's here with me today to back everything up, and that is why I'm requesting a hundred and eighty days, if possible.
All right, ma'am, did you hear a hundred and fifty is the most? Will that work?
We will try our best.
Okay, we, we really need a commitment because.
Okay.
What happens is, is we inspect in ninety, and then at a hundred and fifty, then we'll come and make sure that it's completed. We wouldn't want you to put money into something that, that eventually would not be available to you. I have to ask you, are you asking for the Pine Cove and the shed, or just the, the home?
Just the Pine Cove, not the shed. And we're gonna end up throwing down the shed.
You're going to tear that down yourself?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's just the house itself that we've already worked on.
And the hundred and fifty days is sufficient?
We'll take that.
Okay, and you do know if you've already done plumbing, you have to pull permits and you have to have licensed plumbers?
Yes, we did get permits for stuff like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, council, did y'all have anything for her? I'm sorry.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead. Is it of the, is it of her or us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
So this property was originally red-tagged in two thousand and eighteen, and has already been enrolled in the work program once, correct?
It was, and when we first purchased the property, I, I guess you could say we didn't do our due diligence. We weren't aware. Whenever we found it on Craigslist, it was an easy buy. We didn't do our homework, and we didn't realize it was actually red-tagged up until we got to the property and we had closed on a house and done the closing documents and stuff like that. So it was a surprise to us that it was actually red-tagged.
I have a question. So it was red-tagged when you purchased it?
That's right, yes, and we were never told.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak on this, in this public hearing, before I close the floor? You want to speak in the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the floor at the end of the meeting for any other purpose. Okay. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion on item, this item, number eight.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure, certainly.
Mr. Manager, there were a couple on here that had previously gone through the process before. My concern is, is that we're not being fair across the board if we're picking and choosing for, for people that have previously been in this situation, and I would like some legal counsel on that.
The council could probably, if you want to comment, Mr. Turney, the council's talked about this in a number of work sessions over the years and has allowed this. Y'all set the rules for what you allow to come back, and so these are basically your rules. If you want to change them, you have every right to do so.
And might I just add is that when we first started this, people were coming back mult. And might I just add is that, um, when we first started this, people were coming back multiple, multiple, multiple times. And that's why we put in the hundred and fifty day clause. In addition to, um, in addition to that they, after they come before us like today, they don't have the opportunity to do that again. These must have been old ones.
And Chris said that under state law, that if they want to enter into like a pre-work program, they have every right to.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, before it comes to council, there is the process where they go to a work program, and Chris is, who Chris is.
And he can do, do it.
I guess my question, this one here, was this one, sorry.
We come at the last one?
Yes, ma'am, was that previously in the work council, in the work program through council or through Mr. Boone's office?
Is that a pre, pre-council program? Was that number seventeen?
Yes, the number seventeen, so if, if you look on the reports, it'll say owner enrolled in a pre-council work program, yes. And then we'll have the dates that they were enrolled in and ended. So you'll see some of them don't have those dates just because they don't take, they don't, uh, take advantage of the opportunity to enter into the work program.
So that will be the first one.
Yeah, it's always up to the owner.
So none of these have previously been before council?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the process is, once they come to you and you make a determination that they're to be torn down, the only way they can move forward beyond
is to appeal.
is to get an injunction.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we used to get them back a lot before we put these rules in place.
Uh, can you tell us the numbers that we just heard from the property owners?
Um, it's number ten, eleven, and seventeen.
Mayor, I have a, a quick question about, uh, council member Neil's comment on number seventeen. Ms. Boone, on number seventeen, though, there was a clarification that it was already red-tagged before the current owner purchased it, correct?
Correct, so it sounded like they, it was flooded, it sounded like they purchased, an original person purchased it, and then they sold it again. And it's my understanding this is the second property owner since the flooding.
Right, but the current, um, owner, Ms. Gonzalez, they have never been in a, a work program, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll file the paperwork at the courthouse, but if someone sells a house to someone and they don't-
Tell them, yeah, they don't know.
So they don't go to a town, because-
Yeah, it's-
Correct, so she purchased it in between it being filed at, at the courthouse and, and making the purchase.
Maybe it was filed over there, but whoever she bought it from-
May not have said anything.
You know, a lot of times they show up at the title company at closing and then they find out for the first time.
Right, I just don't want her penalized because it was already done.
Yeah.
I have one other question.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, what's the average cost for tearing these down for the city?
Depends on the market, but approximately five.
CDBG money?
Um, so if it's in the community development area, which is roughly east of I-ten East Tex, then we typically use CDBG money for residential. If it's commercial, we use general fund. If we're looking at the west, west part of the city, which is not in the community development area, it's not eligible for HUD funding, so we use general fund for residential and commercial.
Can we place liens on these properties?
We do place liens on commercial properties. Again, we have general fund, but, um, it's not the policy for us to place liens on residential. And I know that over the years, we've had work sessions to discuss it, but at this point, we do not attach lien for residential.
Because what would happen is we'd just end up getting the land, and a lot of, then we'd have to maintain it.
Well, my thought process is, is that, first of all, the city does not want to start mowing an additional twenty-five lots every year.
Right.
How do you get rid of this property?
So we don't necessarily take ownership of the property.
But we, we should have to start mowing it, because they're not gonna mow it.
Typical, well, it does happen. We do tear down homes where there is no owner that we can find, and we may have to start mowing some. But, um, a good number of them, again, we don't necessarily take ownership of the property. Um, and so we don't, it's not automatic that we start to mow them, but it's a possibility that we do.
Thank you.
True, after five hundred dollars of cuttings, we do attach a lien, uh, for the, for the mowing, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel, before, um, I ask for a motion? Would someone like to make an, a motion on this item, please?
I'll move to approve with allowing extensions for ten, eleven, and seventeen.
Okay, a hundred and fifty days on all threes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, uh, oh, if there's no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, let me find my- I've got a lot of papers today. Okay. Want to take us into the next item, please?
Mayor and counsel, these, uh, were requested by various council members, consensus of the council last week to place these two items on for discussion items. The first one is to review and discuss the capital program, capital reserve, and a possible dog park at Rogers Park.
Okay. Councilmember Getz, are you gonna, um, speak on this in the work session?
I, I, I thought we had adequate discussion last time, but others wanted to follow a process, so I, I'll, I'll wait and see whatever, what anybody wants to talk about that wasn't discussed last time.
Okay, um, I think, um, the issue was about, um, where we put dog parks throughout the city. And that you had originally put it on, and is that why it has, um, the capital and capital reserve programs because-
That council member Neil, the way he worded it was he wanted to be able to talk about the capital program, the capital reserve, and the possible dog park.
Okay.
And, you know, I've spoken with, uh, probably six out of seven of you about this, uh, going back, you know, months, sometimes even a couple of years. Um, I know all of you that I've visited with are in favor of dog parks. Uh, we all believe, including the administration, that they do nothing but enhance the community and make the community better. I guess what I heard from a number of you that, you know, last week it may not have gone so well because, you know, you were asked for an up or down vote on the item, and just for clarification, or people that may watch this and don't, maybe didn't see last week's meeting, um, you know, the project, again, I think we all would say, good project. It's just not budgeted for, it's not anywhere in the budget, capital program, capital reserve, the normal places you would approve a project like this. So, you know, I don't know how you want to move forward or if you want to move forward. You know, we'll, we'll do anything the council wants us to. I mean, if four or more of you want us to do, as you, you know, A, B, and C, or X, Y, and Z, our job's to go get it done.
Okay. Councilman Pate.
Uh, thank you, mayor. We had also discussed the possibility of looking at other parks around the community, uh, around the city to see if there was an interest in dog parks there. Did we get any, was there any feedback on any of that?
I don't, I don't know how you, we get feedback.
Probably would come through council. I, I thought I saw one email about it, maybe not.
We weren't, staff was not asked to do that.
No.
I can tell you that this project, well, dog parks, the construction of possibly three dog parks were in the capital program in twenty twenty. And at undisclosed locations. It was a project for consideration, which you're familiar with, meaning it's something to think about in the future. Does not have any funding earmarked for it, and, um, so those were, you know, with discussions with some previous council members, the way that was done a couple of years ago. It's not in the twenty twenty-one capital program or budget. So, uh, I think to answer your question, I would presume that there's other areas that would like a dog park. I hadn't had any groups come forward, or none of you have come forward with any specific locations, but, um, so to answer your question, it wasn't there in twenty twenty, three undisclosed locations, and that was taken out.
Took it out because of funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, councilmember Samuel's next, and then you, please, or unless he wants to?
I yield to councilman.
Okay, go ahead, uh, councilman Muton.
Well, I have been approached about a dog park, but I knew that the funding was removed and had not been budgeted for, so with that in mind, I did not move forward on it. Because I knew that if the budgeting was not available, it was almost senseless to even move forward on a dog park in light of what we had been faced with, with back-to-back hurricanes and, and COVID. So that's the reason I didn't come forward with it.
We agree.
Councilman Samuel.
Last week, I, uh, I responded to a request about the dog parks as well as the hike and bike trail. Um, as I said last week, uh, when we come to the discussion on hike and bike trail, I think that's totally different from, um, the dog park. Dog park is not a necessity at this time. There are many other things that, uh, we have to be, uh, diligently, diligently working toward as far as, uh, providing necessities to homeowners throughout our city. Uh, water and sewer in and out the house, as well as, uh, the street and drainage to make sure that we continue with the pipe bursting, those things that, uh, would provide, uh, keep, to prevent flooding in neighborhoods, improving the streets in the neighborhoods. We need to do something about trash in the neighborhoods. There are many programs that we should be focused on in trying to make the necessities of our citizens a priority as opposed to some of the other luxuries. And I'm a, I'm a dog owner, I'm a dog lover, uh, there is a dog park. If I want to take my dog to a park, I have to go over to, uh, off of Seventh, Seventh Street to, to the dog park. Um, but that's a luxury I have. Um, I don't think it's the time when we have too many people calling about, uh, sewer backing up in their yard, backing up in their house, uh, trash along the roadways without being able to give any assistance to, uh, do something about our communities. With the, uh, storms that we've consistently seen, we've seen a consistent, uh, uh, the communities just look bad now. And that's something I see going home every day. Now, when we did the, uh, we just made the allocation for the overlays, um, some of us see ten years before we get results on it. There was only one project in Ward Three. But I understand that there are areas, other areas of town that have issues also. So I never wanted to get into playing Ward politics and, uh, ta, uh, and dealing with the Ward politics. But we have to be sensitive to every citizen, uh, because, uh, like I said, right over by, uh, uh, Garner Road, that park there consistently floods. Water's coming up almost over the streets, then trash is flowing down the streets. But it's a process. Helbig Road has been bumped since twenty sixteen. It's on the list now, and it's still on the list. But I understand it's taken time for it to get there. But when we begin to talk about dog parks and citizens looking at this, and they say dog park, and they can't flush their commodes when it rains, there's a problem. So I, I won't belabor the point, but that's my feeling. I, I did say I didn't have a problem with certain things. I have no problem with moving forward with the surveillance cameras for the hike and bike. I understand that, that's a, that's a necessity, a public safety necessity. But a dog park is not a necessity, and I don't think we should treat it as that. And it, let it go through the process of going through the capital program, and eventually, um, uh, it will be done.
Anyone else?
Of course.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Councilman Samuel, would you support putting it back on the capital plan?
The dog park? Sure.
And unfunded?
Yeah, sure.
Is that what you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either. Go ahead.
So we're following the process that some wanted to follow last week, and nothing has really changed since last week, except we've had another hundred people sign the petition saying they want the dog park at Rogers Park. We are working on our sewer system. We're working on improving our water quality all the time. We're working on picking up trash. We can do more than one thing at a time. We have the ability to do more than one thing at a time. We have, in the past, funded items because the majority of council wanted something done that had not been considered or was not in the budget before. As recently as three weeks ago, we did that. So I know that given the relatively minor amount of money that this is going to take and the large desire that I see out there to have this done, that we can do this. I did take the liberty of talking to a reputable fencing contractor who came out there and looked at the site, the proposed site. And he gave a proposal, which of course is not binding. We have to go through the city's bid process and, and do, do things that way. But there's certainly nothing wrong with the council member asking for information, gathering it from people. And this was for installation of one thousand one hundred and ten feet of six-foot black vinyl chain link fence with two four-foot pedestrian gates, and also for the installation of a hundred and fifty feet of six-foot iron fencing with two four-foot pedestrian gates. And the primary cost of this project is the fencing. The total for this estimate, which again is not binding and it is two years old now, forty-six thousand dollars. So I believe that we can afford that, given that in this fiscal year we have sold fires, old fire station number one, which was going to be just torn down and demolished. That was the previous recommendation to us from the administration. But I suggest that we put it on the market. And thankfully, it was able to sell, and we realized three hundred and two thousand dollars for it. Same thing for the melting facility. We put that on the market, we sold it, we realized another couple hundred thousand dollars. And not only did we get money in the bank for those, we freed ourselves of the obligation of having to maintain those properties. Which was budgeted for because we thought we were gonna have to keep those properties up. Now we don't, so that's more money that's freed up. I understand the point that there might be a perception from some citizens that, well, wait a minute. I've got potholes in my street, or I've got a toilet that won't flush when it rains. Or I'm having to deal with brown water. That happens, does happen. And we work on it and we respond to it, and we've, I, I mean, we just signed off on a, uh, a pipe bursting contract today. So we can do this, we have the ability to do this. It is a quality of life item, not personal to me. I'm fortunate enough to have a large yard, so my dog- I'm fortunate enough to have a large yard, so my dog has plenty of room to run around with. But there are other people that are not as fortunate. There are people that live in apartments all around Rogers Park, walking distance to Rogers Park. There are people that live in townhouses all around Rogers Park, walking distance to Rogers Park. These are the people that want to be able to let their dog run freely and get some exercise. You can't do that in Beaumont because we have a leash law, but you can do it in a dog park. We always say, why can't we be more like some of the progressive cities, Houston, Austin, that are having amenities like this? This is something that just isn't going to cost that much money. And frankly, I don't want to start a precedent, but I've talked to people out in the community where I know that this money could be raised, or a large part of it could be raised from the public. That's how badly some of these people want this dog park. They're willing to put their own money into it, to do it. Now, I think that's a bad precedent for the city to start, saying, well, if you, you know, it's a public works project, but if you can get enough citizen buy-in, we'll do it. But I'm telling you, that's how badly people want this project to happen. They're willing to put their own money in to make it happen. I've talked to them, I know that's true. So, at the end of all this discussion, I'm going to ask that it be put back on the agenda for our vote, if I can get a second. And, you know, the public can see where people stand on it. And I think going into an election season, people should know where their council members stand on these things that they're asking for. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Yes, Councilmember Pay, Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you. I think the question we need to ask is, Cal, are we taking any money out of any of the funds that we spend on water and sewer? Or would we have to in order to do this? If in fact it was done?
No.
And the councilman gets, do you have any idea? Because as I recall, the Oaks District wrote a check for $25,000, if my memory serves me correctly.
Well, if they wrote it for 10, we matched the balance.
Okay. But it was a pretty significant amount of money that they put up. Do you have any idea of what you think some of the other citizens may be able to come up with? I'm not asking you to chisel it with stone, but do you think if we could raise $10,000 like they did for the Oaks District? I thought it was more than that, but either way, the Oaks District made a significant contribution for that, to build that park.
Well, I don't want to channel my inner Joe Willie Namath.
I guarantee you.
But I could guarantee you that we could raise $10,000. If that's what the Oaks District contributed towards the dog park. I mean, do we have that? Do we have some documentation of that somewhere?
We can look for it, I don't.
The Oaks probably does.
We keep our, yeah, keep those records for at least three years. Yeah, it was a significant, $10,000 from a neighborhood association. I don't recall any other neighborhood association stepping up for anything we've ever done in any of the other neighborhoods.
We, the city, did not ask for that.
Yeah.
They came forward and made the, hey, we'd like to contribute this. And y'all know that's the most active neighborhood association in the city here was, right before the Dallin West.
Would, I mean, we're just discussing this right now, but would that assuage any council members' concerns that might be on the fence if the petition drive people were to come up with $10,000? Would that be, make it more palatable to anybody that has a concern about this?
Mayor, I think one of our problems is there's a gap between the original number, which was an estimation of 75 to 100,000, and then this number here of 46, which is a much more reasonable number.
But he said it was two years old.
Yes, and I understand, but is there?
That number means nothing, okay?
I'm just, I guess I'm asking for some type of clarity for the council.
It's between 75,000 and 100,000.
Say that again?
It's between 75,000, yes. I'll take men and women on our staff over him going and finding some contractor out of Orange to come in and, you know, give him a number. It's based on, those mean nothing, okay? We've gone through this before on other projects. You can't use those numbers, you don't know what, you know, yay, explain the six-foot vinyl fence, but no. There are certain things we have to do to meet state law and to go through the bidding process, and I told you we would spec it, if you all approve it, spec it, for the most part, to mirror the one at Ida Reed Park, okay? And Keith Folsom has a detailed estimation, it's all detailed spelled out.
So you're still holding your number?
Forget that 46,000, that means nothing.
Can I speak to that? One of the big differences, though, Mr. Manager, so back to just the fence price, Councilman Getz's number is probably pretty accurate. The difference, though, is the city's number, which I fully support, is having a concrete apron, water, benches.
Exactly.
And different amenities that are not included in this number.
Exactly. That's why I didn't want to start talking about 46,000 because it's not going to be near that number, not unless the bids come in really good.
Right, and it included more.
Oh, you have to extend water to the site, you have water stations. Are we going to have a sidewalk to the location if the council wants to do this? Are we just going to make people walk on the grass, you know, between the basketball court and the tennis court?
It needs to be the same quality that we do everything else. Councilmember Getz?
So the Ida Reed Dog Park, I went out there, I did not see a concrete apron under the fencing there. Am I mistaken? Is there one there?
No, that's just what Mr. Folsom's recommending at this time.
But my question is, is there a concrete apron? Because that part of the proposed budget for this park by itself is $37,000, just for the concrete apron. And there isn't one at Ida Reed Park. So if we're going to talk apples to apples, you know, I sent you an email, and I said, I don't see the need for a concrete apron there, but, you know.
Well, I'd say this, Mr. Neal's in the construction field, owns his own business, he recommends one, Keith Folsom, who does this with the City of Beaumont, for hundreds of our facilities, recommends one. Do we have to do one? No. The council, you know, if you want to move forward and save money, and fence not going to last as long, but it's up to you.
Are we having problems with the fence at Ida Reed, other than when we didn't take the banner off so that the wind and the hurricane blew the fence down?
Yeah, we have problems with a lot of our fencing after five, 10 years.
Well, other than our failure to take the banner off the Ida Reed Park, which basically caused the wind forces of the last hurricane to cave that fence in, the fences look pretty good out there, even without an apron. Now, you have told me before that this proposal's not worth the paper that it's written on.
It's not.
Well, I disagree with you, and I'll tell you why. This is one of the largest and most reputable fencing contractors, not just in Texas, but in the nation. They've done projects for the Pentagon. They're currently doing projects over at McNeese where they're replacing all the fencing that was damaged out of Hurricane Laura. This isn't some fly-by-night fencing company.
They're a reputable firm, but how you go out and talk to someone and how they spec it does not help us. It hurts us, actually, because people, like a council member, may think we can go build this for 46,000, and we can't. So.
Because it's spec to a certain line.
We're trying to, the reality is, it's going to cost, we think, somewhere between 75 and 100,000. And Mr. Folsom does this every day, he's really good at what he does. Hopefully, the bids will come in less for that, if the council chooses to go out. I'm just saying, we can't rely on one person coming in and giving you an opinion on what a fence would cost. It depends on how you spec it.
Councilman Pay. Councilman Pay, and then Councilman Samuel, and Councilman Delshaw.
What kind of timeframe did it take to build Ida Reed?
Oh, they could probably do that.
Not very long.
Like 60 days?
So, a couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay. When will we start working? And this is for the citizens. When do we start working on our next budget?
Depends on how you would want to fund it. If you wanted to do it out of the capital reserve, if you're going to do one dog park, less than $100,000, you'd budget for it in the capital reserve, which is approved, you know, it's effective October the first of this year, 2021. If you wanted to do a couple of dog parks, which again aren't funded, you know, you could submit it, I have to submit it to the council by May the 15th, then we have public hearings on it, you all could make amendments to it, add, detract. So, it depends on how you wanted to fund it.
One other quick question. If the citizens, and there's 2,500 of them, that have signed the petition, it appears that if they could round up $50 apiece, it would pretty much fund it. I'm just using the numbers. Or $30 apiece.
That's up to y'all.
No.
From an administration standpoint.
I'm not asking that we would do that, Cal.
I don't think we ought to ask people for money, you know? So this isn't about, this is about funding because you're planning, you adopted a budget to go into your fund balance, $3.7 million. The capital reserve, yes, we sold those two buildings. We're still going to use about $3 million of fund balance in the capital reserve. Your fund balance will be gone, you're going to have to make a transfer again like you normally do in 2022.
But the point I was, wait, I'm sorry.
So this isn't so much about, it's about funding, but we all know that asking for an up or down vote on something, none of us has ever seen that before, okay? Again, he can do it, he did do it, but that's why we're in the, that's why we're in the situation today, where, you know, it's not really moving forward, it's because it is outside the process. You know, we take pride in our work, we're recognized on a regular basis for our excellent financial condition by the Finance Officers Association and other people, and our credit ratings are good, and it's because we budget for things appropriately, very transparent how we do it, and y'all know what the process is. So, can the council move forward if they felt like this was a priority? You bet. And my job would be to work with staff and go get it done. So it, you know, it's up to you, how you want to move forward, do you want to move forward at this time? You know, do you want to put it back in the capital program and consider it another date? You know, that's up to y'all.
Okay, just a minute, please.
Well, the point I was trying to make is, it appears there's a couple of options out there. If people can't wait till we put it on the capital reserve in the budget, and came in and raised that money and said, hey, will you build it for us? Or they could wait till we did it, and the city could fund it. I mean, there's.
There's, you're right, a myriad of ways to do it.
Yeah, if they just can't wait till we do it, put it on the budget, get four votes, if they just can't wait, it'd take $30 from 2,500 people.
Is the petition a legal petition?
No.
Okay. Councilman Samuel?
I simply ask the three of you. If we continue to allow individual council members to come up with ideas as to what they want in their neighborhoods, do you want this to become a council that plays ward politics in who can get the most people to come and fill the council chambers making demands outside of the process? Do you want to acknowledge those who are privileged enough to have the excess funds to contribute to the city? To help get projects in their communities? Is that the way you want to do things?
No, I'm just saying there are a lot of options out there. I'm not suggesting they do it, I'm saying they can do whatever they like.
Is that what, how you want this council to administer? You want this council to be administrators, taking away the goals and the objectives of staff?
I didn't say that.
And the plans of staff? I'm not saying you're saying that, but by acquiescing to this, that's what you're doing. You're saying it's okay for a council member to go out and find his pet project and circumvent the process, get it onto the agenda so that we will force you all to show your hands as to whether you're going to support this community or that community for a special project? Rather than allowing our administrators to administer and use goals and objectives for our city, use their wisdom in planning to, how they budget it, how they use the capital reserves for the unexpected contingencies that come up as we go along? Are we going to do that? Are we going to be administrators up here? Are we going to let them do the job that we pay them to do? We can be distracted if we allow it to be distracted, but it's the you three, you all will be the ones that feel the pressure when we start playing ward politics. More divisive, yes. A dog park at a time when people can't even get into their houses yet?
Mayor, may I respond?
I think Councilman Getz was next, and then I'll call on you, okay? Councilman Muton, unless he wants to let you go next, but go ahead.
Again, I'm being told that this is my pet project. It's not. It is a project that 2,600 people are asking to have happen. The word "privileged" was mentioned. It is these very people that are not privileged enough to be able to have a yard big enough to run their dog that are asking for this to happen. These are not privileged people that are asking for a dog park, and I wasn't advocating that they be asked to kick in $25 or $30 a head. But I said that I am confident that if it were necessary to assuage the concerns of some on this council, that $10,000 could be raised. In fact, I'll guarantee that.
Okay, Councilman Muton?
Wait, I wasn't finished, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I thought you were, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking about ward politics, or the phrase "ward politics" was mentioned. I am very conscious of having the necessity to look at Beaumont as a whole. And I have supported, and will continue to support, things that are done in other parts of the city because it helps Beaumont as a whole. But it seems like that when citizens in Ward Two are asking for something to be done, it's immediately met with the cry by some of ward politics. Now, we have, in the past, and it was said by the manager that we haven't, but it's not true, we in the past have had situations where things have come up that were not in the capital plan approved for. They were put on an agenda on a Friday and voted on the next Tuesday, up and down, up or down, no discussion ahead of time, no work session. But we've seen that. We have seen that. And it happened as recently as last summer. So, the distraction and the division isn't being created by me. I am simply doing the job that I was elected in office to do, which is represent the citizens of Ward Two. And when I have 2,600 of them asking for something to be done, I'm carrying it to the council to consider as a whole, because it does take four votes. It takes four votes to get any. It takes four votes to get anything done. The question was asked to the manager by Councilmember Pate. If we do this, is this in any way going to take away from working on streets, water, or sewer? And the answer is no, it is not. The distraction, the distraction is being put forth by those that are saying, oh, well, we've got all these problems. And the inference is that if we build a dog park, we're somehow taking money away from being able to fight those problems. We're not. Those items have been budgeted for, we're going to continue to do them. We're a big city. We have a forty-four million dollar fund ballots. We're, we're doing well with our property tax appraisals, we, Mayor, you, you and I just heard recently that appraisal values are gonna go up, so we're gonna get more money in all likelihood from property taxes. The distraction is trying to say, boy, if you build that dog park, you're gonna really hurt yourself in terms of being able to uh your, fix your infrastructure. That's not true. It's absolutely not true. We can do this. The question is, do, do four members of council have the will to do this? It's been two years, two years since this was first proposed. So do we just continue to kick that can down the road? And hope that Mike gets, gets beaten this election and this all goes away? I'm gonna represent the people that put me in office, thank you.
Okay, was there any other comments?
Yes, good sir.
Okay, Randy, I'm sorry, um, Councilwoman Shaw, I'm so sorry. Oh, Councilmember Muton, good grief.
Thank you.
I'll just take your turn.
Well, a lot, a lot has been said about the dog park, I don't think anyone is against the dog park. Right now, I think it's just a matter of principle. And when you look at principle, the city manager has said that none of the infrastructure would be affected. But when you look at people unable to pay their rent, people unable to pay for their utilities, people are having to go to the food bank to subsidize uh their grocery and, and feeding their families. I mean, I, I love a dog just like, like the next person. But when you look at the principle of us right now putting in a dog park in one area when the capital fund was, was looking at putting in several dog parks. If we're gonna put in a dog park one, one part of town, we need to put a dog park in other parts of town. Everybody sitting here is elected by their wards. And everybody wants what's best for their citizens in their wards. It's not about a, a ward fight, it's about the city overall. And I would tell you that it is a quality of life issue. But right now, in the position that we're in, I'm sorry, I, I just cannot see a dog park. Not just one dog park, if we're gonna do a dog park, let's put it back on the capital program. We could have it submitted by May fifteenth, which is only two and a half months away. And then we can budget for all three of the dog parks. If not three, maybe two other dog parks. But we have hired staff and we have great staff, professional staff that does a great job. But by not allowing them to do the job that we've hired them to do, this, it's, it's just not right. And another thing that was mentioned, the money from the sale of the LL Milton, which is in my ward. If we want to talk about money that's being added to the budget from different wards, I'd like for it to stay in my ward. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I, I think we all agree, we're all saying the same thing, it, it appears. I think we all agree that we need to focus on necessities and then quality of living.
That's right.
I think we all agree that a dog park would be good for our community, I do understand there are other wards that would like a dog park. I think the real question for us and the struggle that we're having right now is timing. When this project first came to me, probably in two thousand nineteen, I said I could support that, that project, because I think it's a good project. When it came back up last year in the fall, my comment was the COVID nineteen creates a, a different climate and the timing is not right because the perception that keeps coming up here today that uh we're dealing with a pandemic and perhaps this is not the time for a dog park. I was hoping that the first of the year, things would begin to calm down with the COVID nineteen, was what I was hoping. Uh, the numbers do appear to be getting better, but we're still in the midst of a pandemic. And there are twenty-five hundred uh citizens and
Twenty-six.
Ward, uh, twenty-six constituents in Ward Two. And, and Mike, I don't believe this is a pet project, I think you're doing what you're elected to do and that's to represent those people. And, and that's in your ward, and so I respect you for what you're doing. But I, I, we have a hundred and eighteen thousand, it was mentioned that the three of us, being the mayor and two at large, that we're under pressure to consider the entire city, and so there are a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and nineteen thousand people in Beaumont. And so I have to look beyond just a ward and see the entire city. And so where there may be twenty-six hundred that want a dog park now, how many thousands would say to me, Councilmember, would you please wait until we get out of this pandemic? I know you've mentioned the fund balance, uh, city manager, and we're still unsure of the impact, the full impact that we're going to experience with this year, the COVID nineteen, last year and so forth, uh, it's going to hit us and, and we're trying to prepare for that, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we have approximately forty-five million in our fund balance, because we just got our new financials. However, you'll probably go into that two to four, between two and four million, and that's, I say that because it's been on, most of it's been on sales tax. So we're looking at it on a monthly basis, but it has been up and down, up and down for many months with a number of surprises, we'll know more here probably in the next couple of days, because we'll get the December sales tax numbers, which are by far the, the largest month. Uh, you get those two months in arrears. So you know, and a lot depends on this year, you didn't have to make the transfer of the municipal transit fund of two and a half million dollars. It's somewhere normally between two point two and two point seven million a year. So will the federal government provide additional bus money? Maybe, I mean, with that new bill they're considering right now, you just don't know, there's a lot that, but to answer your question, we'll probably go into that fund balance, my guess right now is somewhere between two and four million dollars. And, you know, we didn't give our employees an increase this year besides police and fire, meaning the timing was not good to do anything new. When so many people are out there suffering and we're trying to live within our means. And we know over here the capital reserve is gonna go into a three point eight million, and so the council, this next council that's elected in May, is gonna be faced with definitely making a transfer of the capital reserve because y'all have supported that for many, many years, and it takes a lot of money to buy new equipment, needed equipment, new vehicles, just to keep, you know, the fleet in good condition, this was mentioned earlier with the fire truck. So, but you're going into that, three point eight million, why? Two reasons, number one, I don't think anyone wanted to raise taxes during the middle of the pandemic. And number two, that fund balance, if you go back twenty years ago, that fund balance was about eight to ten million dollars.
Yep.
Got down to about eight percent. We have built that thing up to forty-five million over twenty years. How did we do it? Started living within your means, but after Hurricane Rita, after Ike.
Harvey.
Harvey too, but you allowed, because we did, we do get that extra sales tax money. And you didn't build it into expenditures, you let that savings account grow. That is what allowed you to get through the last year without having to cut services to the public or raise taxes.
And layoffs.
No layoffs, and we've downsized the organization over the last twenty years from about fourteen hundred and seven employees now to about thirteen oh nine. So we have a hundred fewer employees, not many governmental entities can say that, especially over the last twenty years, but we've done that, and that's eighty percent of our expenditures, it's people, it's wages and benefits. So, yeah, the fund balance is forty-five million, so it's, it's timing, you know, and I think a council needs to have flexibility. If a council came together and coalesced behind an idea and said, look, this is really important right now, it's a priority that y'all agree on, let's go do X, Y, and Z that may not be budgeted, you ought to be able to do that, and I think that says a lot about the organization, because we could do it. But you have to ask yourself, is this a priority? And is the timing right? That's, that's the key question, and that's up to y'all, y'all are the policymakers, you decide.
Let me finish.
Okay. So, so he asked a question and
Let me finish, Councilmember Gitz. I'm sorry, let me finish, uh, thank you, city manager, I appreciate that. I, I do know that, I believe, I believe you said, but we started this two years ago, I think, Councilmember Gitz, yeah. The only thing I would say is that I, I, I do believe this is a, a, a project that we as a council need to consider, in other words also. I think we have to improve the quality of life for our citizens in Beaumont. But I would say this, I think of the two years, one has to be taken away, one has to be dismissed because twenty twenty was so unusual for us. I don't know that you can count that year, COVID nineteen was, it caught us off guard, we had no idea that was coming. And we're still trying to come out of it, so it, I, I just feel like last year was just a, um, a year that we just cannot count. And I would encourage this council to find a way in the future, whatever that is, if it's, whenever that is, let us find a way to move forward as a group and get things like this done for the sake of our citizens. Whatever the process is, whatever the funding is, we have to find a way to do these things. Uh, it's just a question of, it's now the time, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gitz, I really have something to say, but I'll let you go next, um, are you gonna give us something different? Go ahead.
Councilmember Muton, you said that we need to build dog parks in other parts of the city for it, I will tell you and commit to you that if there is a hue and cry from citizens in other parts of the city that want amenities like a dog park, that is something that I would be favorably disposed to consider. Okay? But on the flip side, you mentioned the Milton, and you wanted to see that money stay there in Ward.
You mentioned the Milton.
But, but you brought it back up saying you wanted to see the money stay there, and I want to remind you of something. The reason that the city has anything to do with the Milton is because the city and this council as a whole decided to use community development block grant funding to build a gymnasium over there. And as a result of that, the city had a security interest in the facility. And when the facility went under, it reverted to ownership of the city. But that CDBG money wasn't Ward Four's money, it was the city's money. Okay? And just anecdotally, let me also remind you that the city was the beneficiary of nearly fifty million dollars of oil and gas royalties because something that was struck and found in the oil and gas realm beneath the grounds of the municipal airport, which is in Ward Two. And that money ended up being spent on street improvements all around the city, except in Ward Two. Not one penny of that was spent in Ward Two. In fact, the biggest chunk of that was spent in your ward, on Washington Boulevard, thirty-five million dollars. Mister Manager, last week you said the fund budget was, fund balance was forty-four million dollars, today you say it's forty-five. I like the direction that that's going, that's great. All we're looking here, we're looking at less than a hundred thousand dollars to build a dog park that twenty-six hundred people want. You know, if we can't get that done, you know, I just, I don't know what else to say.
Mayor, can I come in, please?
Certainly, go ahead, please.
And I don't want this to go on all day, because it's three fifteen and we've been on this for the last forty minutes.
Yep.
But no one here has said they do not want a dog park. No one has said they do not want a dog park. Everyone has said it's about principle and timing. And it is about principle and timing.
What, what's principles?
If they, excuse me, if they and when I say they, citizens in of Ward Two are asking you as their council to represent them in moving forward with a dog park, I would say it was not budgeted for. It's not in the capital fund. Because that is the truth. Our city manager and our administrators did not budget for it. It can be budgeted for and submitted by May fifteenth. Because no one is saying no at all. And back to the LL Milton, you stated that we have a surplus of dollars from the sale of it, so that's why Ward Two should get a dog park. And I said, if the money is a surplus from the result of the sale from the LL Milton in Ward Four, let's leave the funds in Ward Four. That's the reason why I referenced to that. Thank you.
Okay, so can we make a suggestion here? Let's say, um, even though last week I was very clear and I said, let me make myself clear, I'm not against a dog park, I'm not against cameras, it's still all over Facebook that I hate dogs and I hate people and I like people getting robbed. But I am one hundred percent in favor of both of these things, I think in my opinion, it's not about the money, it's about how we do it and that, the timing based on so, so many things that have happened. My suggestion would be, if council can go along with it, that we add and let staff research it and see where it needs to happen, since we're gonna be going into our new budget year for October first, we'll start working on it this summer. That we as a council give a directive to staff that we want to see dog parks in the city. And if we can come up with um those locations and, and they're, and they're fair and equitable across the city and we, we do them, then that's what we do. Because I've not heard one person up here, honestly, say they were against dog parks. I do totally understand what COVID nineteen has done to us and what COVID nineteen can do to our budget. I'm gonna tell y'all, I know this budget, Kyle will tell you, I look at it all the time, we talk about it all the time. And the next council is going to have some issues if we don't do the right things now, and I do, I don't want to be one to say, well, okay, I'll just do it, because next, the next person's gonna have to deal with it, that's not what I do. So, um, I would suggest that we as a council come together and say, let's look at dog parks in our city. Let the people who we hire to plan and to build and to do everything that we hire them to do come up with a suggestion to the council that we put on the in our capital plan, it could be unfunded, it might be funded, we don't know how this year is going to end or where we're gonna come in with sales tax, there's so many variables. There's so many variables with the federal government right now in changes that are going to affect us. Sometimes good, sometimes bad, that's what I believe we need to do, but I want to say again, nobody say, I love dogs, I mean, I'm a big dog lover. But I would like to say that let's, let's do that, let's come together and give that directive to the staff and not hash this over anymore.
Mayor?
Quick comment, Mayor.
Okay. Does anybody agree with me first? Would anybody be willing?
I was, I was gonna follow up on what you said.
Well, are you willing to, to go along with that?
Since what I was gonna ask really pretty much was the same thing. Is there a consensus of council members who would be willing to say, following along what the mayor said, since we can make motions?
Yeah.
Is there a consensus among council?
It's not really a motion, we're, we're gonna have an action item here.
We, we can't vote on this today.
No, I know that.
But is there a consensus?
I wasn't making a vote, I was saying that we give a directive, and we've done that before, we can do that, absolutely can.
You're, you're splitting hairs, Mayor. Whether you call it a, whether you call it a consensus or you're taking a vote, it's the same thing.
Now, are you gonna tell me that we have not met in this room right here and given a consensus to staff to move forward with something?
I am saying that whether you call it a consensus or whether you call it a vote, it's, it's, it's pretty much the same thing, but I, I want to say this.
But it's not a vote.
I've learned a few things since, in almost ten years that I've been on council. And what I've learned is that it's really easy, if you really don't want to see something happen, to come out and say, the time's not right. I'll point to the Dallin Road Extension as an example. That project's been on the books for almost twenty years. It's, we're in a discussion on capital plans, Mayor, so we can talk about it, okay? Thank you, I, I mean, you know, we can talk about it.
So are you telling me that I'm saying let's do this because I don't want it, that is not true?
I am saying that it is very convenient to say, well, I, I like it, it's a great idea, but the timing's not right.
Well, it's not.
Well, you know, the timing apparently hasn't been right for the Dallin Extension for twenty years. You know, that's not a Mike Gitz idea. No, the way I'm talking, are we gonna go back and forth or am I gonna have the floor and talk?
The Dallin Extension that you're talking about has not been on there for twenty years. It's maybe been on there for one or two, and you know that, don't...
The Dallin Extension?
The Dallin Extension that you're speaking of, starting at the, at I-ten. You're speaking at the last phase.
What part of the Dallin Extension has been built?
None of it.
That's right. And that's been on, it's been, and it's been on the capital plan since Mayor Lord was in office.
The first two phases, not the third.
Any of it, none of it has been built.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just gonna say this.
Who do you blame for that?
Yeah.
Well, you.
Okay.
Okay?
I didn't know I had a vote, that's funny.
And, and I'll, and I'll tell you why.
Yeah, please do.
I will. Because the Washington project, the Washington Boulevard project has had enough money spent on it that it could have done the Dallin Extension. And we could have done an asphalt overlay on Dallin, on Washington Boulevard, just like we did on Dallin, just like we've done on other major streets in the West End. We could have done that.
Could have.
We could have.
Here's the deal.
Well, wait, can I finish?
Please do.
We could have done that. Now, we didn't. We chose to completely rebuild Washington Boulevard. I think the price tag is now up to thirty-five million dollars. I don't know what that has offered to the city in terms of economic development for a lot, for the businesses along Washington Boulevard. I've driven it, I haven't seen a whole lot of new businesses coming into Washington Boulevard that weren't already there. But you yourself have said that there is not a single project that the city could do that would offer more economic vitality to the city of Beaumont than extending Dallin, uh, Dallin Road all the way to I-ten. Those are your words, and I agree with that. So, did we miss an opportunity there by not doing Dallin Extension? I absolutely believe we did. That's my viewpoint.
Okay, so I think someone had asked you a question, and I'm not even sure who.
I was, I was trying to, I was trying to make the point. Doesn't, we, it, it appears we don't have a consensus on a dog park today or next week. But is there a consensus, and I'm tying in with what, uh, the mayor said, of individuals sitting here that'd be willing to say, we want to put this in the capital budget for the next year? And, uh, also take a look at any other additional dog parks where, uh, other people might, uh, want dog parks in other parts of town? And I must say, uh, I'm five blocks from Ida Reed and have four dogs, but I also have a big enough yard that they can run around, but not everybody's got that, as Councilmember Gitz said. Bottom line, is there a consensus here today, not voting on it, but is there a consensus to put this dog park and any other dog parks, dog parks on the capital, uh, reserve budget for next year? We can ask that, if there's a consensus, which is basically...
So, Councilmember, so Councilmember Page, can I understand, based on your comments just now, that you're agreeing with my suggestion?
I was trying the whole time to agree with you, Mayor.
Well, you're just stating again, I'm just asking if you do. Okay. All right, anybody else? Do y'all wanna, do y'all wanna move this forward? What do y'all wanna do?
I just have a question.
I've made a suggestion, and, um, if you, I'm trying to move this forward because there, it very much appears to me that there's not four votes to get this.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what your, the two of your requests. We're putting this into, uh, uh, asking the city manager, when we come up for our budget this year, to have the dog parks, plural or singular, on the, uh, process to discuss for the upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two budget year.
That does not mean we have to move forward, but it does mean that we have a, that we have the desire to look at this.
So that would be like asking that we begin to plan for a possible, uh, park or parks, but not funding it. But if at that time we feel we want to fund it, we can then fund it. Is that correct, is that the process, Mr. Manager?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, then I'll follow up with what you're making about it. That's why we pay cash.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, that's the process.
So am I, I'm fine with that process.
You brought it up earlier.
I know, y'all just, that's, I recommended the forty-five.
Well, but, but you, you recommended putting this one on there, I didn't hear you say multiple.
I put fifteen on there.
But are you good? Are you good? Are you good? I know you're not, but...
Well, you know, look, if we have a commitment to put this back into the capital plan and we can see that is there this May, and we're gonna have the opportunity, of course, to talk about budgeting for it, that's fine. You know, I, I do think that this issue of, you know, fair and equitable has to be balanced. Well, yeah, but is there a demand for it somewhere else? You know, show, show me, I, I mean, you don't go and start building things, you know, to be fair and equitable. I mean, where is the, uh...
Councilmember, that's not what you said.
Wait, 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 Mayor, please. You know, we...
You've been talking all afternoon.
I, I didn't even want to do this today, okay? But since we are, you know, if you're gonna talk about fair and equitable, you know, we had the opportunity to have an athletic center in the West End when the YMCA went bankrupt. We could have bought that church, or, I'm sorry, bought that YMCA building and put an athletic center there. Same thing, no, no, it's the same thing, because you are so much conscious of being fair and equitable. So, and I, I appreciate that, I really do. I think you should strive to be fair and equitable. But the Sterling Pruitt is only in the North End. We, again, missed an opportunity to have athletic centers in the West End and the South End because both of those YMCA facilities were for sale, cheap. And, and we owned one of them outright. We could have made athletic facilities, activity centers in all areas of the city, but we didn't. We didn't do that. So, you know, fine, put the dog park in the budget, uh, when it comes back, put it in the capital plan. But, you know, unless there is a significant cry, like, yeah, it doesn't have to be twenty-six hundred, but, you know, bring us some, uh, people in the areas that you're looking at putting dog parks and say they really want it there.
That's right, and that's part of the discussion that you would have as you put things on the capital program as it comes forward to us. But secondly, a dog park, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars times four is nothing like an athletic center that you continuously fund. As we know how much it costs to run the Sterling Pruitt, that's something that we have to pay for over and over and over and over. The two cannot be compared. And I wasn't on council then, by the way, so, anyway. Um, we're gonna move forward, we have read good, we're gonna move forward. Next item, please.
Second work session, uh, discussion item requested by the council was to review and discuss video surveillance within the city's park system and at parking lots for the hike and bike trails. Again, this is a policy decision, and it's clear to me that, uh, the council would like to move forward, that you're okay to move forward. So, I'll work with staff and we'll, uh, move forward to make installation at the two parking lots, at our two hike and bike trails. And then the council asked for statistics at other park facilities, which I'll hand out to you. There may be one on here that staff will consider moving forward, but all we really need to know is, were you okay with us doing it? So you weren't, you wouldn't be surprised or get notified by a citizen that, hey, you, you're putting these cameras up and you didn't know anything about it. So again, it's a process and, uh, I answer any questions you may have.
Wow.
So what you're seeing is number of calls for service, which, uh, I would look more towards the number of auto burglaries. And, um, the hike and bike trails, as you can see, definitely have the, those are the two problem areas. And then we're, we're gonna take a look at Klein Park as well, has two, two parking lots out there. And it's, you know, we'll continue to monitor it with our police department and staff, Parks Department, and, uh, do what we normally do.
Question.
Go ahead.
These, uh, calls for service, um, I mean, that can cover such a wide range of things. What, what are we primarily talking about here?
We're looking at the last row that says burglary.
Uh, but I'm looking at the calls for service and...
Could be anything and everything, every time the police department is, someone calls nine-one-one for service to one of these city parks.
So it could be anything from loud music to a shooting.
That's right.
So with, for the camera, uh, I think for the camera issue, um, is the auto burglary, because that's what's happening. Is there smash and grab? What's that?
Throwing the offenses. I'll, I'll say, uh, since, you know, I was one of the ones, the voice of concern, I feel very comfortable with moving with the surveillance cameras on, on the hike and bike trails. It shows, uh, and, uh, if there are other areas that we find in the future, we need to address that.
Agreed.
Especially for the safety of the citizens.
So, um, Klein, y'all are gonna look at, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, council, anything? All right. You'll be bringing it back?
Klein should be considered.
Or does it, you don't even have to, do you?
This, this, uh, we'll move forward, we don't need council action on this.
What's that, council?
Klein should be considerably cheaper because we already have power out there.
It depends on where we want to put the cameras, but yes, there is power there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, that can, I believe that concludes our work sessions, right? Um, yes. Uh, before we go any further, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the government code, Susan K. Tony versus the city of Beaumont, cause number A dash two-zero-four, comma, six-four-four. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on any item, now is the time to do so. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer, she will hand it to the city clerk. Again, I will reiterate, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Addie Allen, ninety-six, ninety-five, Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Got it, Councilman.
Mayor, council, Mr. City Manager Hayes and Attorney Cooper. Um, I'm standing again, and I've heard you all evening. And I know to everything there is a season and there's a process. And that's what I've tried to follow, the process. But the process has not worked for me according to the ordinance that I stated last Tuesday. I got a letter January twenty-seventh, and it says, the property located at ten-sixty Shewana, when I've been getting bills for ten-ten Shewana. And it says I've been found in violation four times, whereas the city did an authorization for the municipal bureau in May. I started getting the bills in May. So I was not notified each time there was a violation. Now, I do appreciate the staff sent me a letter, January twenty-seventh, but it's not quite true. And it says the bills were sent to municipal bureau for collection for the past due amount due to non-payment. But non-payment, like I said before, was because the ordinance wasn't followed. So now, we can talk about all of the processes and what you want because you have money. But there are citizens, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, that's on a limited income. And you're asking me to pay for something where the staff has not followed the process. I won't call names, but bottom line, I asked for a hearing because that's what the ordinance says. And that has not been followed as well. So I really would appreciate that, and I know it takes time because you've seen me at least five or six times standing before you. And I don't have any council person that has said, this Alan, really, what is the problem? When I actually prepared a packet, and I don't know if you looked at it or you trashed it. But bottom line is, there's people that if it rains Thursday, they're gonna get flooded again. And I don't hear anybody talking about that. But my issue is weed abatement, you know, and, and weeds, you know? That's not important to you, but it's important to me. And bottom line is, bottom line, I have cutters, and we're, we're, we're vacillating. I need some help, and I need you as council people, as leaders to stand, you know, and help, help a citizen. The other thing I'd like to talk to is about the ordinance. And I'll quickly say that one of the ordinance has said that a person running for office should be at least twenty-one. And I'm asking why not eighteen if you serve the, if you service, you go to service, you work. And bottom line, eighteen, people are very, uh, astute in high school about economics. And right now, you're not showing it. If they're looking at this, oh my God. So, you know, everything is a season, a process. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council people. I want to hear from somebody, you're about to run for office.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stick to the facts, Ms. Allen's a, this is my opinion, very nice lady. We've known her for twenty-plus years, Councilman Samuel's looked into this. So Mr. Boone's gonna provide a memorandum to the full council and just give you the background. It's not an easy situation, I mean, it's not... Cut and dry. Cut and dry because she's technically not the owner. Let's just say from legal terms, she's an agent that pays the property taxes for these properties, but they're not in her name. So, anyway, Mr. Boone's gonna provide you a memorandum, hopefully we'll put in there the who, what, when, where, why, and get that in your packet this Friday.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have something, Councilman Samuel?
Is that the memo, memo I asked for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Brian and Nivo, sixty-nine, fifty-five, Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas.
May I go up?
Of course, yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, everybody. I don't know if there's anything that I had on my list that you guys didn't cover over the forty minutes that it, uh, it took to, to go over the dog park. to go over the dog park. I mean, there's, there's one already. It seems like it's successful. You say you walk your dogs there. This isn't a money issue. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars. It's embarrassing to the city that we're arguing about a hundred thousand dollars for something that people could want and talk about quality of life. I lived in Austin for two years. I mean, we had Zilker Park. Everything in the world was available to us there. And you wonder why people leave this city. You wonder why, you know, every weekend, people leave and go to Houston or Lake Charles, or go to the lake, or go to the beach, or go somewhere else. It's because there's nothing to do here. A hundred thousand dollars? That's it, to, to have something nice so my son can go walk his dog, or your families, or anybody else in the community? It's not a ward issue. I mean, it doesn't matter where you live. We're not gonna tell you you can't go to, you know, the West End of Beaumont, because you don't live there. This is for everyone. I just, I don't, I don't see the holdup on it. And, and, and another thing, I mean, it's almost embarrassing that we have to go to a crowdfunding scenario. I mean, it's forty-four million dollars in the bank, and we're talking about crowdfunding. I mean, we have to pay for it ourselves. It's just, talk about principle. I, I mean, I know there's a question mark, 'cause it was never answered, but timing? Two years? Two years for a hundred thousand bucks. I just, I don't, I think it should be done, and I think it should be done quickly. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nevo.
Thank y'all.
Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak today? Did you wanna speak, sir? Did you, did you fill out the slip at the end? Do you still have that, Ms. Rousard? Do you still have his slip, so you can get his name, 'cause he wants to speak now? So we could just do another one for him? Please, go ahead.
Is it Mr. Richard?
Okay, Mr. Richard, come forward, please.
Charles Richard, fifty-seven eighty Falcon, Beaumont, Texas.
I guess I'll just, coming back here, I said that I was gonna make a decision on this at the end of the thing. Does it end?
Yes, sir, we already did, and you got the hundred-and-fifty-day extension that you asked for. We already voted on it.
Okay, uh, I guess I'll have to go, I'll have to go up there.
Yes, sir. To work, yes, sir.
I'll do that then, but, uh, can they come and remove the tag?
No, sir. I'm sorry, no. You, you need to go meet with the second floor. Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there any other citizen who wishes to speak? There appears to be no one, so I'll close the floor, and I will move to council comments. I'll start with you this, my right this time, Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council, for agreeing that cameras are a necessity at our hike and bike trails. This will certainly help alleviate the concerns of those that have chosen to no longer go out there because they themselves had a bad experience by having their car burglarized, or they have seen their friends and neighbors having their car burglarized. So this will act as a deterrent, and it will also act as a, an aid to the police in identifying and apprehending those that choose to commit criminal activity. So again, thank you for that. On the dog park, we've waited two years. We can wait a couple more months and, and see this in the Capitol Budget. I can assure you, we will have probably another five-hundred, a thousand people sign the petition between now and then. And I think you will see a growing momentum to build the dog park at Rogers Park, which is only going to be an attractive quality-of-life item that, you know, I believe will be heavily, heavily utilized. So with, with that, I appreciate the time today, council.
Thank you. Councilman? Councilman Page?
No comment.
I have nothing.
Councilman Mouton?
That got to me quick. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to share condolences with the death of Willie Ray Schmidt, Jr. Of course, everyone knows he was a football standout from Charlton Politt High School, one of my neighbors, and the brother of Bubba and Tody Schmidt, all who were outstanding football players and coached by their father, Coach Willie Ray Schmidt, that contribute to making Beaumont the football capital of the world by then-Mayor Ken Ritter. I also received a phone call from the daughter of Senior Chief Naval Officer Michael Guillory. Uh, she does not live in Beaumont, but she said that her father served his country. He was a native Beaumanner, and she wanted to give a donation to Veterans Affairs League here in Beaumont. And I tell her that I would be more than happy to acknowledge and send condolences to their entire family, especially a veteran that has served our country. And so condolences to the entire Guillory family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have much today. I just want to reiterate what came out last week, as everyone knows, or hopefully knows, and, 'cause it was very strongly reported in the media that our five county and two city and one facility hub was approved by the state. And we will be receiving eleven thousand vaccines per week, but that is between all of those entities that I just talked about. But it is a huge start. Very excited about it. I wanna thank all the counties and court author, who's also involved, and everything, one that was on the team that put together the plan that was accepted. What they ask us to do is say how many we thought we could do in a day, and that's what we ended up getting. Ours is a thousand. However, that is five hundred, because you've got a second shot. So if, if it's been, we are going through the process, and you will receive an email or a text that basically, once you've pre-registered, they can, it goes through, and it has the one A and the one B categories. And so if you get a, an email or a text, that means that they've considered you to be in one of those, in one of those categories, and will give you a link to schedule. Just because you get the number, because you're pre-registered, and that's on vaccine.beaumonttexas.gov, that's on our website, and, and on all, and on all of our information, that does not mean you have an appointment. That means you have a number. So if you are in that category, you will get the opportunity to, to schedule online, or someone will call you. And so I just want to reiterate that. We are doing this by appointment. It's going very, very smoothly. I've had nothing but great accolades about our Health Department, and what a great job they're doing as far as how smooth it's going when people show up to get their vaccine. I think city manager said you've gotten some, too. They've just been rave reviews on how they're handling, that it's clean. A lot of people have not been in that building. But what I would like to say is, there's a lot of speculation about where the shots will be given. And, you know, the Civic Center, as you know, has been set up for a while, and we are doing it in the Health Department now. You should not worry about where it's going to be. You should worry about that you have your appointment. When they give you your appointment, they will tell you where to go. So don't show up at one of the places thinking you're going to get a vaccination, because if you are in those categories, you've pre-registered, and then we've called out to you, we will tell you where to go. And I know the media has been asking me over and over about when we're gonna start here and when we're gonna start there. Really doesn't matter, as long as we get the shots out. So, and that's the, that's the plan, and we do feel like we're on schedule to get all twenty-five hundred shots out this week, and we've also got quite a few second shots. So keep in mind, if we give five hundred, that means it's, it could be a thousand, because the second shot is not considered in our doses. So that five hundred a day that we get, or twenty-five hundred, is only the first dose. The second doses are not reported as a new dose. So that would actually be five thousand in a week. So I just wanted to give that little, just give you the little update. And please, 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 if you talk to anyone, just 'cause you have a number, that does not mean you have an appointment. You have to have an appointment, and you will be called, emailed, or texted, so please watch that. And if you get a call on your phone, and you're expecting one, and it's a, please try to answer your phone. I've had a lot of people call me, "I don't know what to do. I missed the call." Just please try to answer your phone if you know that's coming up for you. We'd appreciate it. And if you left an email, they'll send you an email, too. So if you missed the call, check your emails or your texts. Okay? Thanks so much, and y'all have a great day. We are now going to recess into executive session.